Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this special meeting of County Council's order. If you would all stand with me for the vote of election. Thank you, everyone. You may take your seat. Mr. Hutton, if you would do roll call, please.
Thank you, madam. I'm councillor, I'm councillor President. Councillor Donoghue.
Here.
Councillor Emo.
Present.
Councillor Carr.
Present.
Councillor Killard.
Here.
Councillor Kingberry.
Present.
Councillor Robb.
Present.
Councillor McKay.
Present.
Councillor Miller. Warden Murphy.
Here.
Councillor Peck.
Present.
Councillor Reed. Councillor Ryanwall.
Here.
Councillor Robinson.
Here.
Councillor Stack.
Here.
Councillor Sweet.
Present.
Councillor De Sestador.
Here.
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest for the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the public and County Council members. As we gather in chambers this evening, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting today on the traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. Tonight's special County Council meeting is an opportunity for the public alongside the county's elected officials to hear the latest draft of the County of Renfrew's five-year review of the County Official Plan. There are a few housekeeping notes. Please ensure that your cellphone is turned off or set to vibrate or silent mode. The washrooms are located, the men's is here and the ladies is around the corner. Feel free to use them as necessary, but please be courteous as people are presenting or speaking. In case of an emergency, exits are located on both sides of the room. Please ensure that you exit the building in a safe and orderly fashion and await further instructions outside. Please note, as a public meeting, tonight's meeting is being recorded. As you will see from tonight's agenda, we will first hear a presentation from the County of Renfrew planning staff. Questions from the public will follow, not during. We ask that you are respectful of others and keep noise to a minimum. There will be an opportunity to have your question heard or to make a formal statement. If so desired, please ensure that you have indicated to do so on the sign-in sheet that is on this table right here. Please feel free to sign in when you want. If so desired, please ensure that you have indicated... Sorry. Speakers will be selected on a first count for certain basis by the order listed on the sheet. If you are chosen to address council, please come to the microphone setup here, state your name clearly for the record, and if applicable, the group or association you are representing. Please note, in the interest of time and to allow an opportunity to hear from a number of interested people, speakers will be given a maximum of five minutes at the microphone. As you near the one-minute mark left in your time, you will receive an indication from councillor Sweet. Many of those in attendance may belong to the same organization or family. For the purposes of these meetings, please only one person from each organization or family have them speak on behalf of the whole group. Those that have not been given an opportunity to speak will not be given another opportunity... That are given an opportunity tonight to speak will not be given an opportunity at the April 4 meeting to speak. Your comments will be recorded for the record and be taken into consideration. Council is present to hear your comments and may have questions for staff after the public comments. With that, I will turn this over to Mr. Charles Cheeseman, County of Renfrew manager of planning, to make his presentation.
Thank you, madam Lord. Can everybody hear me okay? That's fine. Thank you also to County Council staff and ladies and gentlemen for coming out tonight to hear about the County of Renfrew official plan. I recognize no more faces in the crowd. Of course, I spoke to this issue back in August of 2016 on the April 2016 draft. So we've got some updated things we want to talk to you about, and I'll take you through a presentation when we go from there. A little bit of background about our office. We are the... We do a lot of meeting with people on planning files, phone calls. People who want to get severances in most of the county come to our office and we talk to those folks. We also deal with abiding property owners who have concerns with development. We deal with subdivisions, improved subdivisions. We provide planning advice to local municipalities. And our approach with all of these types of files is we do strike an effort to find solutions to issues and deal with development proposals in that fashion. And our office door is always open for people to come in and chat or phone us. The outline for tonight, the purpose of the meeting, there's a number of reasons. One is a follow-up to our August 2016 meetings. We had a lot of people out, we heard a lot of things, so we wanted to report back to the group. There were a number of people who wrote in and said, "We want to be notified the next time council meets to discuss the County Official Plan." So we've listened to that and we wanted to bring you in on that. There are other people who said, "We'd like to speak directly to the members of County Council." The meetings we had in the summer of 2016, councillors were at the meetings, but they weren't at the front and it wasn't a formal County Council meeting. So we thought this was an opportunity for a formal County Council presence and for the public to address County Councils, as you see. I'm also going to review something that wasn't on the table in 2016, is the letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs dated February 22, 2017. So when we met in the summer of 2016, we didn't have their formal comments on the previous draft. We don't have those. I'm going to go through some of those comments and explain a little bit about how we dealt with those comments, and I thought that might be of interest as well. I'm going to talk a little bit about Bill 139, major amendment to the Planning Act. It changes the appeal process in Ontario. This piece of legislation comes into effect on April 3, 2018, like in a week and a half, and I want to explain that quite clearly to folks here. And the other purposes I've indicated is for people to address County Council. I'm framing my presentation around three themes, and these are themes that I heard at the meetings back in 2016. There's one comment that we don't, as an office, provide a lot of public education, which is right. Usually when I speak, it's in front of a group of people on a file that may not be very popular with everybody, and we get discussing the file so much that the overall purpose of planning and what it's all about sometimes gets missed. So I'm going to do a little bit of that in this presentation, not a lot, but I thought I would try that. I'm also going to talk about the need to balance planning and the need to find balance between various interests, and also what is the problem we're trying to solve. These two themes came up a few months ago. Two gentlemen from the North Renfrew Land Owners Association called our office up and came in and wanted to talk to us, and they mentioned these two issues. I remember the gentleman saying, "Charles, we're looking for balance and we're looking for what is the problem we're trying to solve?" And that is, what do we do? What is all this planning about? What are you guys trying to solve? And it can be a difficult path sometimes to figure out why we do certain things, and so I'm trying to address some of those as well. But I will certainly spend a lot of time too on the need for balance, which is balancing our needs with provincial needs and the overall public interest. So part of my public education component, what is land use planning? You can Google planning and you can get all kinds of different definitions. We've cobbled together different parts of it, and we've come up with this. It's the orderly allocation of land uses, resources, facilities and services to secure the physical, economic and social well-being of communities. And the goal of it is to create communities that are convenient, equitable, healthy, efficient, attractive environments for present and future generations. So it's a... There's a lot in there, and I'll break it down a little bit. The orderly allocation of land uses, a lot of planning when originally started is about growth management. Allocation of lands based on compatibility and suitability, where's housing going to go, where's industrial land's going to go, where commercial land's going to go. Really, that was a key component of the early planning in Ontario. There's a resource relation to planning, and we have a lot of resources here in Renfrew County, and we want to protect these resources for future generations. Things like agriculture, water, mineral aggregating. Planning also looks at facilities. The plan for hospitals to hockey rinks, where are they going to go in the community? There are some locations that are better, and they should be in an area that serves the community. The services component of that definition, water and sewer, infrastructure to support development, social services, affordable housing, all the key components that you need to support development and make a community prosper. The graphic I put up there attempts to show these elements, and one of the things it does that shows the interconnection of land uses and how one use can affect another. So in this particular graphic, you have a community that's edging into abiding agriculture land, and those two uses can sometimes have a... There are issues around it, and there's provincial policies that deal with that, but it just shows how land uses can bump into each other, and we have to be mindful of that. There's a natural feature going through the middle of that community. It's a water course, and I would hope that the community is protecting that water course because it's probably their supply for water. So it's important that land uses that are on that water course are developed in an appropriate way that protects that water course for the benefit of the whole community. And the main document at the local level, and that's actually the county and regional and local municipality, the all-encompassing document that brings all this planning together is the Official Plan, and that's what the Official Plan strives to do, address all these issues of land use and resource protection and community development for present and future generations. And it's important to note, too, how an Official Plan plays in people's lives. So the main way an Official Plan is triggered is if you have an application under the Planning Act for a development, and you may be familiar with terms like minor variances, severances, plans of subdivision, a new gravel pit, for example, a new industrial development, any type of development that's proposed under the Planning Act ultimately has to conform to the municipal Official Plan that's in place, because that is the guide, council's guide for growth and development, and Planning Act applications must conform to that Official Plan. So when somebody comes in for an application like that, planning staff, municipal councils, public agencies, neighboring property owners, Ontario Municipal Board, all those groups that are looking at, that potentially looking at a file are going to want to know, does that development conform to the Official Plan? So we deal with 175 to 200 severances a year. One of our basic questions is, does this conform to the Official Plan? So it's a very important component of planning. I was asked to prepare a couple of slides on the application of the County Plan, how it covers the different municipalities in our county. So this particular slide, it's the County of Renfrew Official Plan, the geographic coverage in 2003. That's the Official Plan that is now in effect. There is a County OP, but we call it OP, it's Official Plan, that is now in effect that covers... Well, I'll tell you what it covers. The first list of municipalities, the 10 on the left, Amistad, Bromley, Vonisher Valley, down to Whitewater Region, they are directly covered by the County of Renfrew Official Plan right now, the 2003 version. Anybody doing development in those areas would have to address the Official Plan policies. So Severance in Harton Township, we would look at maybe a County Official Plan. And the reason we... I'll go to the next part first. There's a basic policy tie-in link. Those are the five to the right, Armpryor, Renfrew, Petawawa, Deep River, Laurentian Hills. So in the County of Renfrew Official Plan, those are designated in an urban community designation, and what that says is that those communities are to have a certain number of policies in their Official Plan, but that those local plans apply. So if I'm doing a severance in Petawawa, I just have to go to the Petawawa Plan and see what I need. At the present time, there are two Official Plans that are completely outside the County of Renfrew Official Plan structure, McNab, Brayside and Laurentian Valley. And the reason we went to the Official Plan this way in 2003, 30 years ago in 1988, you might remember, there were 36 municipalities in the County of Renfrew, and at one time there were 26 local Official Plans and zoning bylaws, give or take a few. There were then a series of amalgamations in the late 1990s and 2000s, and maybe everybody here was affected by that. Practically every municipality faced some kind of amalgamation. Not everyone, but a lot of them. And the feeling was at the time, rather than do 10 separate Official Plans at all the cost of preparing an Official Plan, do one streamlined Official Plan, reduce the number of documents, save cost in preparation. The policies overlapped a lot and there was duplication, and this was seen as a way of creating one document for 10 municipalities that's flexible, workable and met all the needs, met the county's needs, the province's needs and hopefully the public's needs. We also had a desire that if somebody wanted to develop in Renfrew County, instead of going through 10 different Official Plans, they could go to one Official Plan and it would cover a large geographic piece of our county, and people have a good idea of what they needed to do. As well with the 2003 Official Plan, a lot of the lands are designated rural, which stands to reason. And what we did with that designation, unlike a lot of other Official Plans, we permitted a wide range of uses within that land use designation, residential, agriculture, commercial, industrial tourism. And the local zoning bylaws would differentiate specifically between those zones. And what that meant is if you were somebody moving between a residential to an industrial use, you wouldn't need an Official Plan in it, you would go for a zoning bylaw in there. So the intent there was to create a document that was flexible for people to move around their uses or development proposals without going through the Official Plan Amendment. The severance policy that we have in this 2003 current version, three severances plus two plus potentially more if you do a planning justification report. It may seem an onerous type of report, but it's worked fairly well in our county, and our severance policy right now, if it's not the best, most liberal in Ontario, it's pretty well near the top. I'm not sure there's another county that has a severance policy like ours. That means when you come for the fourth or fifth or sixth lot, you're going to get consideration out of the County of Renfrew Official Plan. In other parts of the province, you're done. And I think in the Greenbelt area, if you're familiar with the Greenbelt, I'm not even sure severances are permitted at all in the Greenbelt. That's an area around the Toronto area. So by comparison with some other areas, we're doing pretty well with respect to severances. What's proposed in 2018? That first column, there's now 12 municipalities that would be directly covered by the County OP. The 10 that I mentioned, plus McNab, Brayside and Laurentian Hills. They are prepared and they have, and they are prepared to repeal their local plans and come in with the County OP, which means they would not have their own separate Official Plan. They would be part of the County Official Plan and the maps, there are map enlargements for those two townships along the walls here. And then the basic policy tie-in or link-in, if you will, to the County OP is now five municipalities, Armpryor, Renfrew, Petawawa, Deep River, which were always there, plus Laurentian Valley has come into the fold as a general policy tie-in or link. What that means is our plan would say basically what types of policies had to be in those five individual plans, but if you're doing development in those municipalities, that's the Official Plan of Petawawa or Laurentian Valley or Deep River, Renfrew or Armpryor that you would use. You don't need to open up the County of Renfrew document. So at the end of the day now, all 17 municipalities would either be directly covered on the left-hand side or have a basic policy tie-in or link on the right-hand side. A little bit of terminology, because the... It can get kind of complicated how we talk about some of these things. This first graphic is just the cover page for the existing Official Plan of the County of Renfrew, the 10 municipalities it applies to. It was approved in 2003. It's approved and in effect. This next one is the draft revised County of Renfrew Official Plan, five-year review, Official Plan Amendment Number 25, golden strike-through. This is the March 2018 version. This is the Official Plan that I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight. So what it's doing, it's making revisions to that 2003 plan. And in that document, if you've had a chance to go through it, it's not an easy read sometimes because we have the black text from the original 2003, the blue text is the April 2016 version, the orange text is the March 2018, and then there's strike-through for policies we've taken out. We did it that way so people could follow, track the changes that have been made to the document. This is the document in fullness of time that would be adopted by County Council, and it's also known as Amendment Number 25 because it is an amendment to the original 2003 County of Renfrew Official Plan. And in the fullness of time, who knows? The result would be, on the far right, a document approved by the province. They are the approval authority for this update that I'm talking about, that draft revised Official Plan, the update, this March 2018 document would be approved by the province of Ontario. They are the approval authority. And in addition to the text, there's also the maps. So I just wanted to next talk a little bit about milestones in Ontario planning. And I thought this might be of help for some people and County Councilors would be interested in it, how we got to where we got. The County Official Plan, folks, is part of a much larger tapestry of planning in Ontario that's been on the go since 70 years, basically. But I can take it back, maybe not as far back as some others would want me to take it back, but certainly the British North America Act, which I think is now called the Constitution Act in 1982. For those, remember your history class from school, maybe, the BNA Act, 1867, Canada formed, became a country, and the federal government and the provincial government divided powers between who was going to do what at what level. So, you know, the federal government took foreign affairs, external affairs, and the province took other portfolios, one being the provinces have exclusive right to make laws on property and civil rights. So the responsibility for planning is a provincial responsibility, and all the provinces, I think all the provinces have their own equivalent of our Ontario plan here, but it is a provincial responsibility. The next date on my slide, I skipped ahead a lot, there was a lot of activity in the early 1900s, the formation of the Ontario Municipal Railway Board, which is the forerunner of the OMB. The 1946 was really the basics of the Planning Act we have today, when it came into effect in '46. And one of the things it did do is it introduced this new instrument called an Official Plan. That's when they first came on the scene in Ontario, and the province was empowering municipalities to do planning in their communities with this Official Plan. And I read a source that talked about the history of 1946. Well, it's a very interesting date, it's after the war is over, the depression is long ended, the war is over, so the country's coming out of 16 years of real or 15 years of depression and war. There's booming economics, industrialization, the efforts for war, industrialization are now turned to consumer products, there's population growth, there's urbanization, communities were spilling out into their surrounding lands, and the province saw the need for some growth management for municipality to manage this new growth. The province was changing before their very eyes. And the interesting thing about this, it was the war effort that brought about planning. It brought about planning because of this industrialization component, but it also brought about planning because there was government involvement in the war effort and it was sort of transferred to land use planning as a way of getting the country out of the war and planning the future growth, and everybody was excited to be doing that, given what they had just experienced 16 years previously. 1983, I don't have that on the slide, but my little story about the Planning Act, in 1983, there was the first real major overhaul of the Planning Act in 1983, and one thing it did that I'll talk about a little bit later was the first time where the term provincial interest was used. This was a point in the Act where the minister could identify something as a provincial interest. Before that, municipal plans were largely community-based documents, and the province didn't have a lot of input into them, they were the approval authority, but they didn't have a provincial policy framework for municipalities to follow. That sort of changed in 1983. The first Official Plan in the County of Renfrew, 1979. 1997 was, there was a bit of a policy statement in '95, but it was a policy statement under the NDP government, it didn't last very long. The '97 was really the first policy statement that stayed in place for a while, and it was under the Conservative government at the time. In 2003, we did our County of Renfrew Official Plan, which we have now in place. 2005 and 2014, the new government has updated the provincial policy statement, and I'm going to talk about that document in a moment. That's why that has implications for us at the county, and as I'll say a little later, our Official Plan has to be consistent with the provincial policy statement. So those two documents came in, and in 2018, who knows, our Official Plan could get approved. But another big change, and I'm going to talk at the end of the evening, is the Bill 139, which is the Planning Act, and the reform of the Ontario Municipal Board. Many of you have probably heard of the Ontario Municipal Board. Very shortly, it will basically, it won't be called the Ontario Municipal Board, it'll be called the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. Has a lot of implications for property owners, has a lot of implications for us at the County of Renfrew as well. A little bit more on some background, land use planning system in Ontario. The entire province is covered by the Planning Act of Ontario. That is the statutory framework for planning. It is passed by the legislature. It gets amended quite often, actually, and it sets the ground rules for planning in this province. And it covers things like Official Plans, severances, subdivisions, minor variances, requirements for public meetings, open houses, all that kind of stuff. There's the provincial policy statement, which is a document that expresses the provincial interest in planning, and it covers quite a series of things that I'm going to talk about in a moment. There's also something called provincial plans, and I don't know if anybody's familiar with those. We are not covered by them. They are the, you may have heard of the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, the Oak Bridges-Morrane Plan, the Greenbelt Plan, the Niobus-Cartland Plan and the Plan for Northern Ontario. These are plans that sit below provincial policy but above Official Plans, and they are far more prescriptive than anything we've ever seen in Renfrew County and hoped to ever see, maybe. One of our colleagues in the County of Peterborough, they are under the growth plan. County of Peterborough is the area around the city, it doesn't include the city of Peterborough, and he told us that as a result of being in the provincial plan, the growth plan, the southern part of their community is agriculture and the northern part is natural heritage system, and all the growth areas are the settlement areas, places like Lakefield, that is where the development takes place. It's very, very... There isn't a lot of white on their maps showing rural designation to develop. It's a pretty prescriptive plan. And one reason I'm going to mention about the reason the province has provincial plans, the Greater Toronto Area, Durham, Toronto, Hallton, Peel York, Dufferin, Simcoe Counties, I think there's around 6 million people in those areas, they're expecting between now and 2031 about a million or so increase. There's various numbers out there, but they're expecting a lot of big increase in the population. Their area of the GTA is less than the area of the County of Renfrew. They have about 7,200 square kilometers, we have about 7500 square kilometers. So they're going to have to fit another million people into an area smaller than Renfrew County, and they've already got 6 million people in there. And that's why I think the province has this growth plan for the GTA and the Greater Golden Horseshoe, because it's very, very serious consequences of trying to accommodate a growth rate of, you know, that many people over the next 15 years. It's a growth rate we, folks, we don't experience, and that's why we live here. Mandatory County Official Plan, Section 1713 of the Planning Act, this is a quote from the Act, "The plan shall be prepared and adopted and unless exempt from approval, submitted for approval by the council of the prescribed municipality." That prescribed wording takes you to the Ontario Regulation, and that's Regulation 352/02. The following upper-tier municipalities are prescribed for the purposes of subsection 1713 of the Act. So everybody on that list, and we're number 18, County of Renfrew, has to have an Official Plan. And that doesn't include, we don't have the regions on the list, we ran out of room, so all the regional municipalities have to have an Official Plan, and there's a whole series of single-tier municipalities that are required to have an Official Plan. On top of that, council shall revise the... On top of that, councils shall revise the official plan every five years to ensure that it has regard to provincial interests listed in Section 2 of the Planning Act and is consistent with the provincial policy statement. And I talked about this a year and a half ago. So we have to have an official plan and we have to update it. And the reason we have to update it isn't necessarily because of any needs that we felt here in the County of Renford. We have to update it to have regard to provincial interests listed in Section 2 and to be consistent with the provincial policy statement. This is a big slide. And I call it the soup to nuts slide because it's all the provincial interests. This is in Section 2 of the Planning Act. These are the things the provinces identify as provincial interests that they require people doing official plans in Ontario, communities doing official plan, to have regard to. And it's, I'll go through a few of them, I don't want to take too much time. Protection of ecological systems, natural areas, features, functions, agriculture, conservation of natural resources, mineral resources, architectural, archaeological issues, energy and water, communications, accessibility, provision of educational, health, social, cultural, recreation facilities, housing, including affordable housing, employment, financial wellbeing, coordination, resolution of conflicts, public health and safety, appropriate location of growth and development, development designed to be sustainable and supports cultural transit between the player's, promotes bill form and mitigation of greenhouse gas emissions. I think there's about 20 on that list. These are, remember I talked in 1983, the province first started this idea for provincial interest. Well, this is where we are 30, whatever, 30 years later, 35 years later. This is their interest as reflected in the planning. So we've got these provincial interests in the Planning Act and the provinces also express their land use planning policies in the provincial policy statement. And this document provides policy foundation for regulating the development and use of land. Example, growth and development, servicing, agriculture, mineral aggregate, natural heritage, natural hazards. It's a similar kind of list to the one I just talked about, but it's in the format of a specific policies as how municipalities are to address these in their plan-making exercise. Which is the next point. The official plan is the most important vehicle for the implementation of PPS. And that's in their document. "Official plans shall provide clear, reasonable, attainable policies to protect provincial interests and direct development to suitable areas." The fundamental principles of the PPS apply throughout Ontario. And this is important for councils, for everybody, but certainly for municipal councils. Anytime a municipality makes a decision on a planning decision, their decision shall be consistent with the provincial policy statement. That's how strong that document is. I've bolded it, it's something here that I'll talk about a little later. Or I may talk a little bit about now, though. The PPS recognizes that local context is important. So I talked about the GTA and all the problems they have. PPS is written with, let's face it, these are policies that do come out of law in Toronto. But they try to recognize local context. We have local context here in the county that is not similar to other parts of the province, much less the GTA. We have a large land base, we have abundant natural resources and natural features, a relatively low population density, and we don't have anywhere near the development pressures of Southern Ontario. So when we communicate with the province, we want them to know that so that we don't have to follow all the same policies and rules that they follow in the Toronto area. And as important as decisions have to be consistent with the PPS, as someone has mentioned, consistent is not identical. So we are trying to look, as we prepare the county official plan, to put a lot of faith in that policy about recognizing local context. I'm going to dive now a little bit into the official plan, this update I'm talking about. So on February 22nd, 2017, we got a letter from the province. They are the approval authority for the updated official plan. And I'm just going to give you a few comments from their letter. They reiterated in their letter, the county is required by Section 13, 1713 of the Planning Act to, by Section 111 of the Regulation, adopt and submit an official plan for approval to the Ministry of Municipalities. They're giving us, we know that that's what the legislation says and they're just saying, by the way, you know, you're required to do this. They indicated that the purpose of their review is to ensure that the policies in the county's official plan are consistent with the PPS and reflect related provincial policies again. No surprise, this is what the Planning Act is saying and they're just telling us, the council, this is what we're looking for. So I'm going to read a few, some sentences from the letter and I'll tell you how we sort of dealt with some of them. At one part of the letter, they said it's necessary to eliminate ambiguity in studies required by placing should with shall. We try to avoid studies as much as possible in our dealings with a lot of development proposals. They're certainly required for large subdivisions and so forth, but for the smaller type of thing, we'd like to not have to do that. So we were using the word should, but we're trying to find some other ways of getting around some, not getting around, but addressing it to help us. They indicated there's no significant wildlife habitat identified in the schedules. It's recommended to include a minimum deer yard mapping, which we've been down that road before. They indicated that the section does not include a natural heritage system, which is required to be identified for Equirigent 6E. And they wanted us to delete the additional consent policy. That additional consent policy, I said, the province would like to scale it down to maybe three or three plus one and no more, not the six. And sometimes people will get a seventh or eighth, seventh if they meet a certain criteria. They also said that, sorry, I didn't have the right slide. They also said the plan should be restructured to provide county-wide policy direction on key matters of provincial and county-wide interest. They said there are additional candidates, areas for prime agricultural, and they want more detail on growth allocation. So here's how we address some of them. The restructuring part, we did address by trying to bring in all municipalities under the County OP. 12 directly, five as a policy tie-in. We have a policy about the four-laning of Highway 17 and how important that is countywide. As far as the agricultural lands are concerned, they identified lands that they wanted designated. We did not designate as much as was recommended by the province. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Growth allocations, they mentioned in their letter that upper tiers such as Renford County are required to identify and provide policy direction for lower-tier municipalities on matters that cross municipal boundaries, as well as manage certain matters such as wealth management throughout the plan. And they weren't sure how this was being met. What the province really wants to do is allocate the growth in the county to the townships. And then within the townships, if it's Whitewater Region, how much is going to go in Foresters Falls? How much would go in Beechburg? How much might go on La Paz? And we said that doesn't make, that doesn't work for our area. What we did do is, in our plan, we said 60% of the growth in the County of Renford will be to urban areas and 40% to rural. And that's just the way the breakdown in the population group over the years has worked. And we thought that was a very straightforward, workable solution, 60-40. And that's just a guide in any case. We also put an appendix A at the end of our plan, which shows the percentage share of the growth in the Renford County in the next 20 years for each municipality. So we take a municipality and show its percentage share of growth in the next 20 years. That, we felt, was a responsible way of evaluating growth in the county without getting into the more sophisticated and specific things that the province wanted us to do. So in terms of a recap, on this type of information, we did not plan for deer yards, they are not on the maps. We do not have a natural heritage system the way the province wants it planned. I can tell you that we've been to sessions where, I forget which county it was, but their cost to do a natural heritage system map is $75,000. And we said, we're not going to, we just don't want to do that for our area. We did not reduce the number of lots in the severance policy. It's still the same severance policy. See where the province goes with that. My position on our severance policy is that it is different from the rest of the province. But when people do sever, maybe more than four or five or six lots, they have to do a report. It looks at the impact on municipal services. It looks on the impact on wells and septic systems. It's a report that we then take in the severance process. We write a report to the municipality. They've got our report in front of them, which is usually favorable. They've got a planning analysis, which is favorable. And local municipalities are making informed decisions about whether two extra severances over five is going to be the straw that makes the camel's back. They've got the information and they generally make the decisions to allow these additional severances. They're looking at things like impact on municipal services. So they are making informed decisions on those matters. I'm going to now go to the, some of the highlights from our official plan. These are some of the things that are in this March 2018 version that I thought you might be interested. The first one is, as a result of our meeting with some folks from the Northern Renford Landowners Association, they suggested some wording for the official plan to address some of these needs. We didn't put everything that was suggested, but we put a line in here to seek appropriate balance between the interests of private property owners and the overall public good. And overall public good, the public interest might be better terminology, but we've got it as public good right now. Interestingly, folks, there's a document I don't have in front of me. The Citizens' Guide to the Ontario Planning Act that the province puts up. I think it was done in 2010. And in it, it says, "It, the Planning Act, balances the interests of individual property owners with the wider interests and objectives of the whole community." So I feel that this is not inconsistent with what the guide is saying about the Planning Act. Whether it does that in delivery is another question. The institute I belong to, the Ontario Professional Planners Institute, are professional code of practice. One of the values is that we are, as members of the Planning Institute, to balance the needs of communities and individuals. So we feel that this is actually consistent with some thinking in terms of the Planning Act and with my profession. And anytime we face a development application, we're looking at the interests of the person. We look at the interests of the public. And where we can successfully marry up both interests, that's a good result. We don't always do that, but we do try for that. Secondary dwelling units, this was a big topic last time. I'll go through this fairly quickly. These are second dwelling units. This is the law of the land now, and official plans and zoning bylaws have to catch up. The province has determined that second dwelling units are permitted as of right. These could be in your basement, these could be an in-law flat. Before, you'd have to go through a planning exercise to permit a second dwelling unit in your house. The province is saying, no, it is permitted as of right. What they've done, though, is we asked them, what do you do with properties around well and septic? Where you could be adding an extra unit on a well and septic and it may not be appropriate. So they've come back and we've put the policy in the official plan that for properties over two acres, there's no problem. Between 0.8 hectare and 0.4 hectare, which is two acres and one acres, they'd be considering a case-by-case basis. Somebody would have to do a minor variance and do an engineering report, primarily look at hydrogeology to make sure that the lot can take up the extra impact. But the second dwelling units in full service areas, there is no issue around servicing with well and septic, obviously. This one is, you know what, do you kind of laugh at it? Hopefully it gives a bit of a break to my presentation. Marijuana production. I'm sure you're aware, there's new federal legislation that's making marijuana legal in certain ways. I'm not sure all the law. So the private sector is ramping up to produce marijuana legally. And there are production facilities either on the go or already in place in places like Chad and Kent, Niagara on the Lake. I think there was a case in that, where it was a former greenhouse for flowers that is now being converted to marijuana. A relatively simple conversion, actually. And you're probably, you may be familiar with the old Hershey plant in Smith Falls. We used to make jokes about Hershey brownies. The Hershey plant in Smith Falls is now a marijuana production facility. So these plants are coming. What we've done is, we're not saying they are permitted or they're not permitted. We're giving municipalities, as they do to local zoning bylaws, the 12 that are part of it. Here's some things to think about if you're faced with one of these things. They could be permitted in agriculture, industrial. And there's a couple other designations that they would be, I think it's on this slide, rural agriculture, urban community, or village community. And a municipality can decide whether they want to allow them in certain zones. They would define the use, they could list these as permitted uses. Or they could list a marijuana production facility, but not permitted anywhere. And anybody who came to a council to set one of these up would have to go through planning approval. And it would look at things like, the key issue around these are setbacks to sensitive land uses like schools. So it's what we call an enablering policy. And it's there if councils want to consider it. Another little item here, short-term rental accommodation. Means any lodging available for rent in private residence for a period of less than 28 days. We are getting, this is a new trend, folks. People are moving in on a short-term basis. It changed the nature of the community. And it isn't always met with open arms. So we've introduced a policy, again, that a municipality can decide if they want to use it. It's to ensure that short-term rental accommodations are properly located and licensed in order to mitigate potential conflicts. And that a municipality can consider things like access, parking, servicing, landscape, and picking on any of these locations. We have had calls to our office saying, we want to do one of these. What are the rules? And, well, there aren't any right now. They probably would need a rezoning. But we thought we should set some policies up for the following. Very quickly, natural heritage system. This gets back to my earlier comments. Natural heritage are things like wetlands, fish habitats, significant woodlands and valleylands, habitat of threatened endangered species, significant areas of natural scientific interest. What the province wanted us to do is, where their development is proposed adjacent to a natural heritage feature, they want an environmental impact study. And they want us to change the should, the shall. What we've done is we've put shall, but depending on the natural heritage feature, we've put a trigger in there like five or more lots so that a lot or two or three are not going to trigger a study requirement for these features. We feel that we've got, we have a lot of these features and that limited, small-scale development shouldn't be a problem. Whether the province will buy that or not, I don't know. Wildland fire, a gentleman requested us to just talk about this. We had covered this last time in 2016. There's no change here, but wildland fire is another provincial initiative. And it applies to forest types associated with the risk of high to extreme wildland fire. And there's risk assessment tools established by OM and RF. We've shown on the map at the back, on the hazard map, where these areas are. And development is permitted in these areas. Maybe permitted in lands with hazardous forest types where risk is mitigated in accordance with wildland fire assessment mitigation. And the gentleman that raised this with, we thought this was a result of Fort McMurray, but it wasn't. These were in the works before Fort McMurray. But the intent is to protect, or, well, protect development from these wildland fires. And it is a policy that's now in the provincial policy statement and we had to address it. I'll go through this side somewhat quickly. This is, although it's an important one, water setback and protective shoreline integrity. We have introduced some new language that allows development within a 30-meter water setback to occur on a waterfront property. Normally, you require, when you develop on the water, you require a vegetative buffer from the water back to where the development is and it's to protect the water quality. We're saying, well, you know what, 25% of the vegetation could be disturbed for recreational amenity areas such as decks, stairways, gazebos, sun, compost, and storage shed. And these are tools that the municipality can put in their zoning bylaw if they wish to. And it's to open up, it's to reflect the lifestyle of waterfront living, to allow some development along the waterfront, close to it, without affecting the purpose of protecting the environment and aesthetic value. I should also note that in our official plan, we talk about changing the 30-meter setback to 15 meters. That shouldn't have been in there. It would still stay 30 meters and not 15 meters. But the intent here, protect the water quality but allow some limited development. Watershed planning, we had some folks, as you know, at the previous meetings, talked about watershed planning. They wanted us to, specifically, they asked the county to set up a council, a water quality watershed council, and hire a fourth of the year. We felt at the staff level that that wasn't a realistic option at this time, so we did not change that policy. Private road standards, that's just another policy available to municipalities, development on private roads. We have a lot of private roads in Renford County. Some municipalities have standards already, the minimum standard for development to take emergency vehicles. We just put a policy there that if municipalities want to, they can have some policies around the minimum width and how they're going to be drained and so forth. Multi-use trails. So the, in April 2016 draft, the County of Renford, there is a policy that said the County of Renford Strategic Planning Council priorities identify the creation of a linked trail system throughout the county as a priority. Council will make every effort to acquire abandoned rail quarters such as the CP and CN. In the March version, this latest draft, we've added that the County of Renford created and adopted a trail strategy in 2016 and that county trails are to be operated as multi-use corridors. corridors. I've got on the slide, the proposed policy would be hikers, cyclists, ATVs, and snowmobiles. So there's some policies around multi-use trails. Whitewater Region, that is, at the same time we've been doing this update, Whitewater Region started their own Official Plan Amendment Number 11. It's been worked on by the township, it's now before the province of Ontario for approval. And our map enlargement here has just got the county plans we're proposing, it doesn't have all the O P A 11 material. What we would do, though, is if O P A 11 is approved, it will form a unit inside the new county OP, as a standalone section for Whitewater Region. I'm getting near the end. Highlights of map changes. We didn't make a lot of changes to the maps. We updated the property fabric and new road layers. So since 2016, new lots have been created, those are as best as we can, they're highlighted on the maps. Any new roads are also shown. Township of Horton, we revised their agriculture designation. I mentioned the province wanted additional agriculture lands in the county. They wanted some, Horton didn't have any in the current official plan, they wanted a certain amount of lands designated agriculture. Council met and worked together, and they revised the designation downward to fit within what they think is appropriate for their township. So it's less than what was required by the province. Township of North Albona, the Wilder Forest, they already have a little bit of agriculture at the north end if they're a municipality, that hasn't changed, that's in the 2003 document. In the 2016 document, we showed a much larger area of agriculture designation, sort of in the middle of the township. The Township of North Albona Wilder Forest requested that be removed, and it has been removed, so it does not show on the, the map enlargement for North Albona Wilder Forest does not show that large agriculture designation. We also made some changes to the maps that were requested by the public. People wanted a little, maybe didn't think an E P area applied to them or a middle area. We made those changes, as many as we could, and some very minor changes with respect to waste disposal sites and wellhead detection areas. So I've got two slides left. So Bill 139, why is this significant? This is the Building Better Communities and Conserving Watersheds Act. So it comes into effect April 3, 2018. So the province had a number of meetings through May and then, I forget, maybe September, and then it was Royal Assent, it was in December of 2017, and it will now be, I think the word is proclaimed, on April 3. And it made changes to the Planning Act and various other acts. What it does is it replaces the Ontario Municipal Board with the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. So instead of appeals going, what was called the O M B, it's going to be called the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. That's a whole other hollow ax, it'll change how appeals are going to be heard by the tribunal. The significance of it, though, is that no appeal of provincial decisions on official plans and major official plan updates, such as the one we're doing now under Section 26, there's no appeal to the provincial decision on the County of Redford official plan update. So I'll say that again, the county official plan, this update, you folks can appeal it, and we can't appeal it. And we have, we've met with the province, we met with the minister, I know our C I O met with the minister, expressed our dislike for this, we did not support it. We've, I think we also, on the Environmental Bill of Registry, we sent a note in from the county objecting to this policy, or this was changing the legislation. And it's very, it means that, it really affects us too at the county level, because we expected when we sent a draft or an updated official plan to the province for approval, there's going to be differences of opinion. We were going to rely on, if there was, if we couldn't work out our differences, we would go to the Ontario Municipal Board. We can't do that now. And in one of the documents from the province, there were municipalities that supported this change. There were places that did not want appeals to these documents because of the cost of O M B, so we were up against other municipalities. The purpose that the province gives for this change in the Planning Act is to reduce number of appeals, increase certainty regarding implementation of provincial policies and interests, and protect important interests such as public health and safety. So they're very empowered about some of these things, and they will not entertain appeals. We're hoping that if we send a document to them, that we can work out our differences, but we won't have the possibility of appealing to a tribunal. What are the next steps in the process? Well, staff, being us, to make revisions to the official plan document. Here what kind of thoughts are coming forward for consideration. We would prepare a plan to be presented to our County Development Property Committee. That committee would make recommendations to the county council. The county council makes a decision on whether to adopt, well, to adopt the amendment to the County of Redford official plan. And then the process is that it would then be sent to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs for approval. They are the approvals. They're highly involved in this process, folks. And that is the, it went a little longer than I thought, I apologize. You can contact us, email officialplan@countyofredford, telephone address, and also our website. Thank you for your patience, I realize it's a long slog, some of this stuff, but I do appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Mr. Charles, that was an excellent presentation. At this time, I have a resolution moved by Councilor Sweet, seconded by Councilor Stack, that the rules of procedure with regard to public delegations be suspended to allow the public opportunity to comment on the county official plan. Council, you've heard the resolution on the floor, are there any comments, concerns? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor. Opposed, if any? Thank you. And at this time, I am going to ask Councilor Sweet to start inviting up those of you that have signed in. And again, if anybody else would like to sign in to ask a question after hearing Mr. Cheeseman's report, there is a sheet over there, and we will make sure that Councilor Sweet gets it, so that you have an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For you at this point this time, I'd ask Mr. Gary Bell to come forward, please. Good evening, Horton Murphy, Council and public. My name is Gary Bell. I'm a planner with the Room of Skelton Millard Associates from Barry, and most of my working life is under that regime of policies that Charles talked about, so you are fortunate here. On behalf of Miller Paving, I have participated in the official plan review, and I submitted a letter with comments in September of 2016. I've discussed the points with county planning staff and with provincial planners, and reviewed the responses in your March 2018 table. Several of the proposed revisions are good, and I thank you for that. I request greater attention to and consistency with the provincial policy statement on a few remaining matters, and this would be either by provision by the council or perhaps modification by the province, and I'm going to indicate only two of those here. First, there is at least one area of the county in its McNab-Grayside which has a large limestone bedrock resource of high quality and significance, and that area is neither identified nor protected by your schedules or your policies, and it should be. There was a useful discussion of this area in the McNab-Grayside official plan, and that's removed, so that discussion and the designation should be returned. Charles indicated in his opening remarks that the objective of aggregate resources and the public interest is important, that's one area. Council, the second one is the intent and meaning of separations, and that needs to be clarified. Good planning should provide both certainty for landowners or investors and neighboring owners, with some flexibility for unique local situations, this mirrors what Charles spoke of, but there's a couple of areas within the aggregate policies and setbacks of separation that do need attention for certainty as we move forward. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the official plan.
Just speak loudly, they can hear you. I'll do it.
Mr. Michael Dunn, please.
Thank you very much. I've requested that Donna Burns speak on my behalf.
Good evening, all. First of all, I want to speak to the legal opinion that was sent to all of us, or a lot of us, anyway. A legal opinion is defined as a view or judgment, not necessarily based on fact or knowledge. So for that legal opinion that we received, it's my opinion that that lawyer said that in that format to avoid any chance of tort action. Now, the second thing I want to bring to your attention, Charles, you mentioned about the provincial interests. Under the Ministry and Infrastructure Act, let me just get it here, Section 1. I had it here a second ago. Sorry about that, I had it here and then I'm flipping back and forth. Okay. It refers to government property, and it says, "For the purpose of this act, land or interests in land, and fixtures or interest in fixtures installed or placed in or used in connection with the land are government property if they belong to the government." So basically, they have to belong to the government, so these designations, this provincial interest, they have to belong to the government. Now, there's the Public Lands Act, I think it's Section 46, that says that the land must be acquired. There's the, I got that here too, just to be the proper way, but anyway, there's also the Property and Civil Rights Act. This is taken out of this, this is where it was incorporated, out of the British North American Act, where it says, "An act adopting English law in certain matters whereas by the first act passed in the first session of the Parliament of Upper Canada on the 15th day of October 1792, it was among other things enacted that all matters of controversy relative to property and civil rights, the laws of England should be the rule for the decision of same." So basically, we got our land through Britain, through the Crown. So when it comes to property, and this act is still in effect today, so is the British North American Act, still in effect today. So they should be considered with all these things that you're getting. The acquisition of land under the Public Lands Act, Section 46, it says, "Land may be acquired under the Ministry of Infrastructure Act for any forestry, agriculture, or other program of the ministry, and any land so acquired shall be deemed to be public lands within the meaning of the act." There's the Municipal Act, Sections 10 and 11, that says, and it's subsection 4, paragraph, subsection 2, paragraph 4, whatever, it says, "Public assets must be acquired to exercise your authority." So for a municipality, any land that you acquire, you have to use it for public assets. So in order to exercise that authority, it has to be acquired from the property owner. What I'm trying to point out here is, our property rights, and what's been happening, what's very interesting for all of this, is back in 2002, the Liberal Government came out with the role of, that report, the role of government was rural, remote, and smaller rural and remote communities? Yes? One minute, oh, okay, I thought you were asking a question. Okay, anyway, and that report was 2002, and at that time, it was the blueprint to shut down Rowanterill. We have had the change in the provincial policy statements that affects our properties. We've had the Endangered Species Act that was created in 2005 that limits the restrictions on our property. We've got now these official plans, that they're growing more and more with restriction on our properties. We have this here in Redford County, we have the Algonquin, 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 Adirondacks to Algonquin Trail that's coming through, again, in Redford County, that's going to be, it's a, it's a natural corridor for the wild, the moose and whatever to come through, caribou, whatever. That's going to involve buffers against people's properties. We've got this trail now with the multi-use for snowmobiles, like how much more is there going to be in addition to all these restrictions with your environmental plans and all this stuff? Your development, your growing is going to be limited because nobody will be afford to live here. Thank you.
My name is Hartley Henderson. I live at 2370 Highway 60, and I objected to my neighbor applying for two severances. Now, I went to a severance board meeting, and the two severances were approved, which I didn't approve of. I understand that I could have appealed to the O M B, and I was told by a gentleman there that day that they had no choice but to grant the two severances. I was told, if I wanted a change, that I would have to wait until there was an official plan review. So I waited, and then there was official plan review. I went to a meeting about two years ago, and the, I had a complaint about land designation, and I wrote a letter, I had it, I dictated it to a current councillor, and they have that letter. And I am convinced it's not going to make a damn bit of difference what I think about this official plan. Now, the thing that I'm concerned about is the, I have a line fence with my neighbor. On my side of the fence, it's designated, I put a rural agriculture, it should be protected for agricultural purposes, and on his side of the fence, it's not. Well, last fall, I had an occasion to be on his side of the fence, and the fellow with me commented on the great crop of alfalfa that was growing in his field, and was he going to cut, a third cut in October? Well, apparently, he didn't. Now, I can't see much sense in not protecting that property for agricultural purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stanley McCosworth, please, Stanley.
Mr. Cheeseman didn't scare me enough with anything, so I actually have nothing to say.
So, that's actually all the people that, oh, this is working. I'm done with it. I'm, I'm, oh, we got another one.
Albert Krujczynski?
Close.
He really did try.
Don't see Garo.
It's the accent.
Krujczynski.
Krujczyn.
Krujczynski. Just like Krujczyn, only you change the B to N S K E on the N. Just like Kruja, only you changed the beat to N-S-K-E on the accent. I spoke at six of the seven meetings, and unfortunately, I couldn't address you people. I own 203 acres in three different parcels. I have managed them, as far as I'm concerned, properly for 49 years. You people look at a map and tell me what I should do with my property. I think I know what to do with my property. When are you people going to stand up against the law? And tell her to back off? You know? This has to happen, or we're doomed. I pay my taxes on time. I've never missed. When I go to have something done, I have to plow a municipal road to get to my work on my bushland. Why do I have to plow a municipal road? The council tells me they don't want to set a precedent. Is that a reason? That's an excuse. Thank you very much for listening. I think I'd like to end my talk.
I want to thank everybody that came up and spoke. I think everybody did an excellent job and there was no overlap, which we really appreciate. Oh, something's going on. Of course, it's working out. At this time, I'm going to open it up if any of the county councillors have any questions Councillor Eno.
Just a quick question for Charles. On the February 22 letter, page 3, the Ministry of Environment, planning change in the old section on treated disposal, will you explain that a little bit, please?
I don't have the letter in front of me directly, but I... Maybe if you could pass it to me, please? Thank you. So when somebody, Bruce or Craig can chip in if I miss this. We faced this problem before with the province. I think around 2014, they came up with the PPS policy that said, "You can't have development on well and septic if you have to have a place to take the septage to a facility to be treated." And that kind of law would shut us down. But I think actually they changed the act that way, but they left the policy open. We have written in our official plan that if you can allow development on septic, and it can be land-applied, which is allowed by the law. It was the policy statement that was out of whack with the law. That's actually what happened. So the official plan policy now says that severances are permitted, and a land-applied method of septic disposal is fine, and that you can't use that to shut down development. So the way they wrote the act was that like, if you didn't have a sewage plant to have the stuff treated, you would not be able to grant new lots on septic systems. But the way the policy statements were and the way we've put our official plan together, land-applied is a legitimate method of dealing with septage, and you can continue to allow development on well and septic. Bruce, I think that pretty well covers the... Yes, I hope that helps.
Thank you, Charles. Anything else from the County Council? Councillor Gummehue?
Yeah, again, a question for Mr. Cheeseman. Perhaps you have mentioned in your comments, or if you could elaborate. I know that in the first iteration of this draft, there was considerable pushback from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs Housing with respect to the 3 plus 2 severances. Perhaps you could elaborate a little bit on what that discussion was meaning?
Yes, so we have a policy that allows more than 3 plus 2 plus extras. They would like us to go to a 3 plus 1, I think it is, policy. And we told them that that wouldn't work for us, and we stopped and supported. So we have not changed the latest draft. It's the same policy. We don't change it. The... Whether we get... Whether they listen to us or not, I don't know. But we made it clear in non-certain terms that we're keeping with the policy we have. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Dusnaisdey Moore. I think the last gentleman that spoke made a comment about that we, as county councillors, should be telling our premier that we're not happy with what's happening. And I just want to assure the public that County Council and our staff continue always to, any new policies that come before us and we feel they're hurtful to our taxpayers, we do do a lot of lobbying to try to convince the premier, along with her ministers, that it's not in the best interest of the people of Rhenford County. I might add, our warden is constantly doing that, as is each member of this table. I personally go and I meet with ministers saying, you know, "We don't like the species at risk," and all those things, and we lobby, and we lobby, and we lobby. So I don't want you to think that County Council does not do that on your behalf, sir. We really do. We work hard to try to convince them. Sometimes we win, and sometimes we don't. So, you know, but I want you to really... I want to give credit to everybody sitting at this table, because I know we all do that because our taxpayers ask us to. That's our job. And especially our warden, she works very, very hard to try to meet with the people that make those decisions, to try to see that Rhenford County is a unique place, and sometimes urban rules don't apply to us, and severity and that. So I know maybe some of you don't think we do, but honestly, we spend a large portion of the job that we do in our seats here, we lobby, and we lobby. And again, I want to give credit to our warden and every other member of County Council, because I know we all go to meet with people in powerful positions, asking them to be, you know, to give us consideration.
Councillor Don Castle.
Thank you, Mayor. In the February 22 letter, the province has made comments, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs comments on, basically, the population projections, demanding the counties to work on population projections, but instructing us to make these population growth allocations. I'm just... We haven't made significant changes on that. I'm not opposed to that, but do we think that they're not doing what they asked us to do in all the counties?
That's an interesting question for Charles, I think.
Thank you for the question. I can answer it in two ways. We didn't not do totally what they wanted, but we did provide some basis for our projections. We just didn't dismiss them totally. We just think at our level, our solution is... solves the problem we're trying to solve. What happens too is when the document gets adopted and sent to the province, there will be more discussions between ourselves and ministry staff, and we will make our position more crystal clear than it is already. And, you know, maybe they will... It'll be negotiation, and I think we can make a case that these types of projections are perfect for our situation.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor Reinwald.
Thank you, Mayor. In section 6, it says, "Possible company land use of compatibility." And in there, it states that it's recommended out of policy to address compatibility with respect to sewage treatment plants and since the land uses. And give the... Let's serve some criteria for the sewage treatment plant, the policy of the separation system. I can give that to you.
I've got something to cover. So what I'm asking, and we have, in our village, we have a sewage treatment plant that originally goes with Mac. In order to grow it down, we have to do something to the plant. So if we increase the size of the plant, we're already not needing this criteria. It's a little modification, but I don't see that happening today.
We will look into that. So you've got an existing plant that you want to expand, which is necessary. The province has these buffering requirements, which are necessary, and the two are colliding in your situation. Okay, we'll look into that, Councillor. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything further from county? Excellent. Is there... Oh, Councillor Gummehue.
Yeah, if I could, I just wanted to pick up on Councillor Dusnaisdey Moore's comments. And more so than just as a county councillor, I live in Rhenford County. I farm in Douglas, and you know that. I own many acres too. And the genesis of my involvement in politics period was through the Ontario Federation of Agriculture in 2002. You might recall there was a significant tragedy in Loughranch that led to the creation Nutrient Management Act, which caused no shortage of harm to my operation. And that's what began my involvement in politics generally. And certainly, I would allow that, that there is charitably, I guess, a misunderstanding in the urban parts, perhaps, in the province of how we live in rural parts of the province. I would assure you that it's not restricted to planning only. Certainly, with inarmious power, we take it up to cause with respect to fire, with respect to police, with respect to health resources, and how they're allocated in the rural parts of Ontario. These are challenges across so many things. And I certainly would confirm to you what Councillor Dusnaisdey Moore had commented, that a large part of what I do within my community, and certainly what I do within the county at large, is to constantly and consistently push back on this. With respect to the item on the agenda tonight, I do have to acknowledge what Mr. Cheeseman had stated, that of perhaps any official plan across the province, that in Rhenford County is probably the most accommodating. And I assure you that if it is not the most accommodating, there's certain costs to it. Now, should the County of Rhenford fail to meet its obligation to adopt an official plan, I can rest assured that the province will appoint an agency that will do so. So we are constantly pushing back on what we feel are some of the more orderous or contentious issues. We are constantly advising the provincial government of what it means to live in rural Ontario. So it is not that we are not cognizant of some of the issues. We live with the same issues that you are living, and we are pushing and struggling as much as we can to have those accommodated in the official plan.
Thank you, Councillor Gummehue. So just as sort of a wrap-up to that theme, I've often joked over the last year in a bit of being warden, it set me up very nicely after politics to be a professional lobbyist, because that's what we... That is, the majority of my time, at least, as warden, that is what it's spent on, trying to make the very Toronto-centric government understand that rural Ontario needs to be seen through a different lens. So I really appreciate the comments. Thank you to all the county councillors for their questions. At this point, I will ask, is there any new business? Seeing that this is very strange, having to look around like this instead of in front. Well, at that, then, I want to thank you all for coming. Please drive safely. If you have any particular property issues, please contact our County of Rhenford staff if they're correctly. You can go on our website, www.countyofrhennford.omn.ca, and go to the planning tab. All of our information is there. And I just, again, want to thank you all for being so respectful and so interested in this very difficult document. So thank you. Good night. Anybody want a sugar? Councillor Dusnaisdey Moore, Councillor Gummehue, favor. Sugar. Thank you.